Yep, so we need all of the Missouri people.
No, no, we're Nate's joining. So we'll just give him a chance to join.
But that's the but that's the rule though, not three and three, right? It was required. Okay.
Can you hear me, Terry?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Okay. You can begin when you're ready. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, July 21st, 2025. Ms. Bennett, would you please call to roll?
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
We have a quorum and you can continue.
Thank you. The board is holding in-person public comments today's meeting. In order to speak, individuals are required to sign up for on the website in advance of the meeting. We are allowing time today for 10 speakers. Anyone who was unable to obtain a time slot to speak in person was given the opportunity to submit written comments through the website. Mr. Lenars, do we have any in-person speakers for today's meeting?
Yes, we have one in-person speaker.
Okay.
Please come forward. State your name for the record. Thank you.
Great. Hi, my name is Liz Kramer. I'm a resident of St. Louis City on the 3,500 block of Humphrey, and I'm here representing myself today. Anything else you need?
No.
Okay. I'm so I'm here today because I've been observing over the last few months as an occasional transit rider these days, all of the transitions that have been happening, the secure platform program, the changes to the gateway card, the installation of the new fare box system, and even the adjustments you've been making to the bus and the train schedules. And one of the things that I've observed is that while there is so much change going on, and I know that takes a lot of operational effort, sometimes that change does not feel like it's designed with the riders in mind. And that not only has to do with the way that the change happens, but the way that it's communicated. And so often what I've seen is that Bi-State and Metro are then telling the riders, here's why this change is good for you, rather than bringing us along all the way so that we feel involved, invested, and committed to the change that's going to happen. And I think like a good example is the recent gateway card changes. I don't personally have a gateway card, but I've talked to a number of folks who have had them for many years. They missed the announcement that that was no longer going to be an option that was refillable. And in fact, I had heard that it would be an option all the way through the new fare transition. And so when they suddenly heard, I can't refill my gateway card, there was this week of panic of like, what do I do? How do I? How do I navigate this system now? And I know you all already know this, but what I want to encourage you to do is figure out how do you design these transitions from the writer's perspective and the writer's experience to really create a thing that we can move through with you and become champions of as well. I think one thing I want to compliment you on is I've been watching the changes that have happened to paratransit, and I think that is an example of where you really designed with the writers in mind, listening to what the needs of disabled riders are and making a system that really works for them. And of course, I know there's still a lot more to go, but I I think that's a good example and an opportunity that you can apply to the broader system of ridership. A big piece of that for me is that the thing that makes the most difference for riders is consistent service and really having bus service that they can use. Today, I live in South City. I don't live that far away. It's like three miles. A bus didn't show up, and I had to drive here today, but very embarrassed by that. And the 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 result is for someone who has another option, they end up taking that other option. Normally, I would use my bike with the train in order to get here. It's torrentially raining. Didn't choose that as a choice. So I really I I think that, given the constraints that we have federally in our state budget and your own budget, I want to see you all be able to make the transitions that are going to bring the most low-hanging fruit riders who want to be on the system. We want to be riding the buses. We want to be with you. Bring us along on the ride. Make sure that those transitions happen a way that's designed and informed by riders' experiences. That's all I got today. Thank you. Thanks for having public comment. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer.
I just wanted to add something to Talby since Ms. Kramer is right there. A couple of things she said kind of sparked an interest in me. You know, I know that we do have a lot of engagement events, town halls, those sorts of things. One of the things that worked really well with ParaQuad is that we've had those, I mean, with 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 callerides, we've had some of those meetings with with different groups. Are there any of those additional engagement opportunities coming up that we can inform people about? And I do think her point about, you know, not just making the change, but, you know, being deliberate about how we how we communicate those changes is smart as well. So if we could just talk to that briefly and maybe give her an answer or two for, you know, ways that she can engage with us more consistently as well and then follow up.
Yeah, it's a very good point, Chair. And for instance, and thank you for that compliment, Ms. Kramer, on the Community Connect events with with our paratransit operators, those have been very successful. So redoubling those efforts, especially when we are looking at such an arc of change, and it is really tremendous. The change, the discernible change to our end product, especially in January 2026, will be very marked and significant with, of course, the gates, but also the fair media, which is a huge undertaking. I just remind everyone with SPP now is that parallel fair project. That's also really a $25 million project. And, you know, I think it's very fair to say you can never over-communicate. I think that's a very, a really a fair critique, and I really appreciate that comment. And we will, I will talk to the comms team about that. Mr. Scott happens to be here, sitting in the room, and we'll we'll talk about, you know, what the Public Affairs Team is looking at in parallel with those kind of communications. So thank you, Ms. Kramer. I appreciate it, Chair. Always makes sense for us to discuss transit. What are the things we're doing well? What are the things we can do a little better? That's totally fair. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Kramer. You've given us something to think about and some constructive feedback, things we're doing well, things we can get better at. Moving on to the written comments, Ms. Bennett, can you please provide a summary of the written comments that were received for today's meeting?
Yes, Chair. Nine public comments and one additional memo are included in the materials for today's meeting. That information was distributed to the Board of Commissioners and staff prior to today's meeting, and the information will also be included in today's minutes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, approval of minutes. The minutes of the April 18th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting have been provided for review by the board. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. Report of the President. Mr. Roach, do you have a report?
I have a brief one, given we have a pretty long agenda today, and I want to thank everybody for their time, always difficult in summer, getting everybody's schedules together. But speaking of schedules, I am very happy to report that we have passed our FY26 at each of our different funders, obviously under contract with St. Clair County Transit District. They were the first one to go and then actually got St. Louis County done just prior to the city. Very, very happy about that effort. Really, really pleased and a special shout out to Tammy Paris, our CFO, who was always there with me, talking to those county councils, talking to the city. And of course, we were able to introduce Ron Forrest and see our bureaucratic efforts to try to move our FY26 through, but gave us a good opportunity to interact with our funders. I'm very, very pleased that we are essentially, well, we're on time as far as that's concerned, and that's exceptional and very good for an organization of our size. But no matter what, as I as I hinted towards, we are moving through a tremendous arc of change as far as what transit will be in the St. Louis area. And that is oriented around certainly secure platform plan, but also our enhancements, not only on the rail, but also our bus system with the camera center and so on. That's going to be very key in our contract negotiations with our union partners at 788, which now Ron Forrest is going to take his extensive experience and pivot on those negotiations. I know Ron mentioned that those talks are likely to start back up in August of this year. I don't want to take take your thunder, Ron, when you talk, but I know he's working on that diligently. We've also had a couple of Community Connect events, or actually Employee Connect events, both at Oliver and at Brentwood and at HQ, just as an effort to go there, answer questions, introduce Ron. Those have gone very, very well. But speaking of that arc of change, very excited that Tom Curran and his team have had the prototype new TBM onsite down at Fair Revenue. We have been looking at this tremendous machine that will, remember, folks, we need to get 120 of those on the new system by January. So that is a that's a hard lift. We're working very hard to do it. I think the the machine's extremely user-friendly, way better with our our colleagues and friends from the disabled community. And really, this new generation of fair media is going to be very exciting. But of course, with any new technology, I ask not only for board patience, but also for the public's patience. I think one of the points that I'm going to kind of parallel on with Ms. Kramer is to be sure that, look, our we have folks who support our system, but communicating what these changes are and what happens naturally and making our system better is something we need to be sure that we're doing. So in conjunction with that, we will be very careful to to communicate in advance, be much more proactive about our messaging. I think you saw the results of some of that through a very positive article from the Post Dispatch, which was very, very well received. I know Mr. Scott has made several media appearances on KMOV and KSDK, just talking about the arc of change associated with SPP, and we're going to continue that aggressive messaging. I hope the board is pleased with that more proactive stance, and that is what we're going to move forward in the very near future. Chairman, that concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for Mr. Roach? Hearing none. Moving on to number seven, or excuse me, number six, Operations Committee Commissioner Moore, is there a report?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on May 22nd, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under item six. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of seven items, which are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item 10. A. Contract Award: Paratransit Certification and Administrative Services, Resolution 1427. B. Contract Award: Drug and Alcohol Program Management Software, Resolution 1428. C. Contract Modification: PACIS, CTS, and CCTV Upgrades, Missouri. Additional Video Message Board Stanzions and CCTV Cameras, Resolution 1429. Contract Modification: Downtown Tunnel Repairs, Resolution 1430. That was D.E. Contract Award: Metro STL Transit Advertising, Resolution 1431. F. I.D.O.T. Agreement for Taxiway Bravo Construction Phase III and IV, Resolution 1432. G. Contract Modification: Employee Medical Training and Wellness Services, Resolution 1433. The committee also approved a contract modification for the cleaning of rail cars at Missouri and Illinois MetroLink maintenance facilities. This item has been modified and is noted on today's agenda as item 11. In addition, at the May Committee meeting, Greg Littner's Chief Legal Counsel provided an update regarding the approved St. Clair County operating agreements for fiscal year 2026. Tom Curran, Executive Vice President, Administration, provided an update regarding implementation of the new fare collection system. Talby just referenced these items. An operations report and a workforce update was provided by Chuck Stewart, former, I guess I should say, Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Metro Transit. An executive session was not held, and this concludes my report of the Operations Committee, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners.
Thank you for that report, Commissioner Moore. Moving on to item number seven, Audit, Finance, and Administration. Yes, that's correct. Commissioner Jackson Jennings, do you have a report?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I do. Good morning. A virtual meeting, a virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on May the 22nd, 2025, immediately following the Operations Committee meeting. Draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under item number seven. AFA Committee is recommending approval of five items, which are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Number 10. H. So Source Contracts for Hardware and Software Maintenance, Resolution Number 1434. I. Proposed Board Policy Revision, Section 60040 and 70.010, Resolution Number 1435. J. Contract Award: Voluntary Employee Benefits Insurance Program, Resolution Number 1436. And K. Contract Award: Basic Life, AD&amp;D, Voluntary Life, Retiree Life, STD, LTD, Resolution Number 1437. L. Contract Award: Flexible Spending Account, FSA, and Cobra Retiree Direct Billing and Health Reinvestment Account, HRA, Administration, Resolution Number 1438. Also at the committee meeting, several informational items were presented, including Internal Audit Department Follow-Up Summary, Third Quarter, FY 2025, Internal Audit Department Status Report, Third Quarter, FY 2025, Internal Audit Department State Safety Oversight Status Report, First Quarter, Allen for Year 2025, Financial Statements, Treasury Report, Treasury Safekeeping Report, and Procurement Report. This concludes my report for the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee.
Thank you for that report. Moving on to item number eight, Safety and Security Committee. Mr. Simmons, is there a report?
Fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Virtual meeting and the Safety and Security Committee meeting were held on May 1st, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under item number eight. The committee is recommending approval of one item, which is noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 10. St. Louis City Police Contract Extension for MetroLink Police, Resolution Number 1439. An executive session was not held, and that completes my report at this time.
Thank you for that report. Are there any adjustments to the consent agenda at this time? If there are no adjustments to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as referenced in the committee reports and as outlined on the agenda. Is there a motion? A second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, here a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. Moving on to item number 11, Contract Award: Cleaning of Rail Cars at Missouri and Illinois MetroLink Facilities. I will ask Tom Curran for his comments. Mr. Curran?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This first request is for authorization to enter into a contract with World Management for Cleaning of MetroLink Rail Cars. In March 2025, Bi-State issued a solicitation to obtain qualified firms for cleaning our light rail vehicles for the next five years. Three proposals were received and evaluated based on the technical requirements specified in the RFP, and then those scores were combined with cost scores, which resulted in World Management being the highest-ranked firm. In May, the Operations Committee recommended approval of an extension of the previous rail car cleaning contract pending the completion of the evaluation process for this new contract. The previous contract's cost inclusive of a 180-day extension was $3,485,000 for approximately three and a half years. The average cost of that contract was $1,020,000 per year compared to $1,111,728 per year for the World Management contract that is now being presented for your consideration. It's a difference of about $90,000. Management is recommending that the Board of Commissioners accept this request to authorize the President and CEO to enter into a one-year base contract plus four option years with World Management for Cleaning of MetroLink Rail Cars in the not-to-exceed amount of $5,558,640. Funding will be provided by the operating budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. Mr. Curran, how is the release rail cars when they're claimed? How is it monitored that we're getting the best bang for our buck? I mean, I've had reports from our ridership that sometimes they're not in the best of shape.
So the LRV Maintenance Department takes care of that, including the monitoring? And in fact, for this contract, there was competition basically to see how well that the cleaning services would be provided. That was actually done twice. So if there are concerns, we always encourage people to report them, but it is the LRV Maintenance Department that would handle that.
Okay, and who's in charge of that?
So I believe that Brian Keek is over that area.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Item number 12, which is the Illinois ATS Battery Electric Vehicle Purchase. Mr. Curran, this is you again.
Sorry, Chair.
Yeah, I didn't see if we are we're going to vote on each one of these after? Okay. Would entertain a motion and a second to approve Contract Award Number 1440.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Sorry about that. On to item number 12, which is the Illinois ATS Battery Electric Vehicle Purchase, Resolution Number 1441. I will ask Mr. Curran again for comments on this.
Thank you. This agenda item is a request to award a contract to Central State's Bus Sales for the provision of battery electric vans. In October 2024, Bi-State issued a solicitation for the provision of battery electric vans for paratransit services in St. Clair County. Seven firms were invited to bid on the solicitation. However, only two proposals were received. The proposals were from Central State's Bus Sales and Model 1 Commercial. They were both reviewed by an evaluation committee consisting of members of the Product Development, Illinois Vehicle Maintenance, and ATS Operations Departments. St. Clair County Transit District partners with Alternative Transportation System, or ATS, to provide paratransit services for individuals certified as AD ineligible and older residents in certain areas. The RFP included a request for several types of vans in order to meet the varied needs of the ATS group, but only Central State's proposal included pricing for all the types of vehicles being solicited. The technical scores are included in your briefing paper, and they show that Central State's Bus Sales was rated significantly higher than the Model 1 Commercial proposal in addition to Central State's providing the four model varieties that were requested in the RFP. Management is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the President and CEO to enter into a contract with Central State's Bus Sales, Inc. for the provision of battery electric vans for the ATS program in the not-to-exceed amount of $4,632,000 for a maximum of 12 vehicles. Funding will be provided by the Low or No Emission Grant Program from the Federal Transit Administration, plus a 20% local match from St. Clair County, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Curran? A hearing none. A motion to approve Resolution Number 1441 would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Curran. On to item number 13, Approval of the Slate of Officers. A virtual meeting, excuse me, a virtual meeting of the Nominating Committee was held on June 12th, 2025 at 1 p.m. The draft minutes of that meeting have been included in the board packet under item number 13. As the current officers have held their positions for only one year, the committee voted to reappoint the current officers for an additional year. The committee voted to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval the following slate of officers for 2025, 2026, whose positions will take effect at the adjournment of today's meeting. The proposed slate of officers is as follows. Commissioner Sam Gladney from Missouri is chairman. Commissioner Deborah Moore of Illinois as vice chairman. Commissioner Herb Simmons of Illinois as treasurer, and Commissioner Andrea Jackson Jennings of Missouri as secretary. We will need a motion and a second for a vote to approve this slate of officers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The eyes have it, the motion passed. On to item number 14, Unscheduled Business. Mr. Roach, is there any unscheduled business?
Chairman, I have no unscheduled business. We can move on to operations report.
On to item number 15, Operations Report. I will ask Ron Forrest for his comments. This is his maiden voyage on an operations report, so I look forward to hearing what he has to say, and welcome aboard, Mr. Forrest. This is presented for information only.
Yeah, thank you so much, and good morning to all of you all, all of the Commissioners. So as you all know, we're continuing to, we'll continue to hire represented vacancies. As of today, our Metrobus operator level is 638 out of 651 for current and upcoming service. However, we've recently started a class of nine operators on June 23rd and eight more last week for a total of 17, so we're expecting to meet our goal within the next month or so. We're still averaging about 1% of our missed trips, so 99%, a little, a little more than 99% of scheduled trips are being made. The highest amount of those missed trips are occurring during the PM peak, and that's because of vehicle availability. As you guys are aware, we're, we are impacted by maintenance staffing shortages. We have a plan for that. We'll discuss that in a minute. We're doing well on the MetroLink side and even better on the calleride side. In fact, our calleride operations has consistently made 100% of its passenger-requested trips. However, again, we continue to be challenged with hiring vehicle mechanics in all areas, with our greatest challenge being the electromechanics, the ones who work on our light rail vehicles. In order to increase our ability to hire mechanics, we're thinking outside the box here. We're working with St. Louis Community College to create an apprenticeship program for the maintenance side. The goal is to establish an additional pool of labor from which to recruit. We're also evaluating the benefit of establishing a hiring pipeline for a pool of applicants as young as 18 years old, who can qualify for an interstate commercial license, which will allow them to work on either the Illinois side or the Missouri side, but not both. Currently, we only hire mechanics with interstate commercial licenses, and that allows them to work on both sides, Missouri and Illinois. Now, because this may have some impact on the represented workforce's working conditions and may qualify as a bargainable item, we need to discuss that potential with the union. We're having a hiring event coming up, July 26th, at the Illinois Bus Garage. We'll be looking for mechanics and operators. We also have a We also have a Paraqua Community Connect in August, so we'll be getting feedback from them. On July 17th, we were at Civic Center last week. Civic Center Transit Center hosting a technology open house where our passengers were able to come in and get familiar with our new accessible wayfinding technology. We're piloting with two contractors on a technology that allows them to, you know, find out where bus stops are located by using their camera phones and which buses are arriving and the times, and so on and so forth. So that was very successful. Lots of us came out. On the Call-A-Ride side, we're seeing significant improvements. Again, total trips taken have increased, and trip denials have consistently been at 0%. Our mobility teams have also gained significant efficiency in service to our passengers by co-mingling our microtransit service with the Call-A-Ride trips. So whenever the microtransit peak drops, that peak demand drops around noon time, they're able to assist Call-A-Ride with about 11% of their daily trips. That's helping a lot. This ensures that not only all trips are made, but better on-time performance is achieved as our capacity more adequately meets demands, allowing greater trip efficiency. We've seen improvements in our reservation times, averaging about two minutes, approximately two minutes per call, which is down significantly from a year ago. Customers are also taking more advantage of the additional features of our Spare Application, which was launched in January of this year. More customers are booking rides on there. In fact, over 10% of our daily trips are booked using the app. We also have instructions for downloading the app on our website, as well as highlighting features. We have an upcoming service change effective September 8th. There will only be minor adjustments to 14 Missouri routes, and 10 of those will be in St. Louis County, and there will be no changes to MetroLink. As far as contract negotiations, I met with the International Trustees last week. Both sides looking forward to getting back to the negotiating table. As you all are aware, I'm sure they've recently addressed some issues within their local. They're regaining their footing, and I'm newly onboarded, so we both agree that we need time to adjust and kind of learn the lay of land. We're expecting to get back to the negotiation table in August. Finally, during the last couple of weeks, and this goes in part to Mrs. Kramer's public comment concerning communicating with customers and including their feedback in our decision-making process, which I really appreciate. My team and I kicked off our, what we call a Ride Every Route campaign. That's two days per week for the next six months. Members of my planning and bus and rail operations teams are accompanying me on bus routes, rail lines, to communicate with passengers. Operators, we're getting their feedback on what's working well and what we can do to improve upon their ride experience and also the operator's working conditions. We're asking them to share their ideas, and we're getting a lot of feedback. We're going to take that feedback. We're going to develop action items, and we're going to continue to communicate those changes as we move forward. I'm also taking this opportunity to learn the system, our customers' ride experience again, and of course, the operator's work environment. And so we're going to use all of this information. We're going to develop what we're calling our Master Service Plan, which includes a comprehensive evaluation of our existing fixed route service, how our microtransit service is being integrated with that. We're going to be looking at tripper and circulator service, and also the feasibility of corridor-based and fixed guyway rapid transit. So more to come on that, and we'll keep you all posted, and at this point, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Forrest? Okay, hearing none. I just wanted to welcome you aboard again. I think, you know, you've got big shoes to fill with Chuck leaving. He was a beloved member of the team, but, you know, it sounds like you're off to a great start. I'm really encouraged by what I'm hearing on the way you're attacking the shortage of mechanics by partnering with, you know, local educational institutions, the apprenticeship, the Ride Every Route initiative that you have going on. I like that. I would just, you know, encourage you. I wanted to highlight one of Chuck's biggest successes that you sort of talked about was the changes we have made to Call-A-Ride and the turnaround, 180-degree turnaround in that system within the past probably 18 months or so. You know, I think that was an example that this whole organization, including you, can follow of, you know, taking in public comment, looking at new systems, being self-critical, really doing a good job to turn something around. So I think wanted to highlight that again for you and for everybody, because I think that was a great example of what Chuck did and a great example that we can all follow going forward. But welcome aboard, and thank you for the report.
Thank you. Thank you for the advice. Dooley noted.
On to number 16. Ms. Bennet, will you give a summary of upcoming board and commissioner meeting dates?
Yes, the next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, August 7th. The next Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting, as well as the Operations Committee, will be held on Thursday, August 14th. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, September 19th. All of the meetings beginning at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you for that. On to item number 17, which is adjournment to executive session. I will request a motion and a second that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080D, Close Records, D1 Legal, D3 Personnel, D7 Purchasing and Contracts, and D10 Auditors. Ms. Bennet, will you please? Oh, we need a motion and a second first. Got ahead of myself.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second, Ms. Bennet, would you please poll the board?
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
The motion passed.